Did the public know that we were being transparent?
Residents aired their views on everything from wanting cleaner sidewalks to taking down illegal signs to just plain complaining.
The number one concern now is the sidewalks, the graffiti and the illegal dumping. Something has to be done.
I spent most of my life looking for an honest politician. Well, I found about five of them in that time, and Wendy's right there at the top.
This, the first of several town hall meetings. The input gathered here will help the city's number one waste fighter zap even more financial waste in future audits. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
For more information on the city comptroller's audits and scorecard, visit comptroller.lacity.org. A recent green industry conference offered people a chance to learn just what drives the trillion-dollar global energy market. Rasha Goel has more on the industry's innovations, opportunities, and public policies.
Global leaders from the green industry came together at Verde Exchange's fifth annual Market Makers Conference in downtown Los Angeles to discuss the green energy market.
It's a conference under one roof that addresses all these sectors that make up the green economy.
Mayor Antonio Villaregoza was on hand to share his passion for making LA a clean tech capital.
Our port has set the world's highest bar for clean air standards for short haul trucks. As of the first of the year, every drayage truck calling at our port is clearing this bar. Truck emissions in three years have been reduced by 80%. LA has one of the biggest markets for solar panels. Hybrid cars move off the dealers' lots at a brisk pace. The ranks of electric vehicle early adopters are growing.
The mayor also emphasized the need for the U.S. to make more long-term commitments when it comes to investing in green technology.
In 2010, Chinese companies invested over $54 billion in wind, solar, and other green projects. That, by the way, is 20 billion more than U.S. companies invested in the same year.
Officials say a common challenge is how to actually create renewable energy while keeping a low cost. It's a meeting of the minds at this conference that may perhaps lead the innovators closer to achieving their goals. From Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
And in more environmental news, Tom LaBange recently hosted a reception exploring urban health. Rasha Goel explains how our environment has a direct impact on our quality of life.
According to the Trust for Public Land, nearly half of Americans get less than the recommended minimum amount of physical activity. More than one-third engage in no leisure-time physical activity at all. Officials say parks play a critical role in improving the health and wellness of adults and children, and there is a great need for them.
The Trust for Public Land has conserved over 3 million acres across this country. 3 million acres are now parks for people that otherwise would have been developed land.
Another advocate of open space is Dr. Richard Jackson of the UCLA School of Public Health. He was recently recognized at a reception hosted by Councilmember Tom LaBange for his book entitled "Making Healthy Places: Designing and Building for Health, Sustainability, and Well-Being." He shared with audience members how times have changed and how people must be more proactive about their lifestyle.
Do you know how much high-fructose corn sugar you consumed in 1968? Zero. The average consumption in America is now 63 pounds. You cannot possibly burn that off unless you're on an extra cycle three hours a day.
Jackson's book focuses on how the design of our urban areas contributes or detracts from public health. Councilmembers Tom LaBange and Dennis Zine are supporters of open space and understand the need for it in the city.
I grew up in a city park system in Los Angeles, in Griffin Park, and all that was in between. And there's nothing like parks and open space for the experience that it gets you.
There's a connection between health, happiness, and what we have for the space that's left.
The city is currently working with the Trust for Public Land to create more green space in Los Angeles. From downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
The Los Angeles International Airport is making plenty of improvements while helping the local economy at the same time. Rasha Goel has the latest on the new changes at one of the world's busiest airports.
When the final nuts and bolts are in, this is what the new Tom Bradley International Terminal at LAX will look like. Construction is nearing the halfway mark. We joined Mayor Antonio Villaregoza and LA Airport officials for a sneak peek at what's happening behind the scenes of this new terminal, containing 45,000 tons of steel.
This, actually, we're making history here at LAX. This is the largest single public works project ever in the history of the city of Los Angeles.
The new terminal will be located on the west side of the existing Tom Bradley Terminal. Officials say the renovation and changes as a whole will help LAX remain competitive in the global market.
We have a very hip, wonderful city, and our airport didn't look hip and wonderful. This is really fixing our front door as a welcoming melting pot of the United States.
Currently, this is the Tom Bradley International Terminal. But when construction is completed in 2013, 18 new gates will be added along with premier dining and premier retail shopping.
This investment means 40,000 construction jobs here in Los Angeles during a time of high unemployment. It's a $4.1 billion investment in making sure that we're a world-class facility, the gateway to Asia and Latin America.
And to better help spread the word, airport officials have launched a public education effort titled "LA Next."
We're really leaning in to spreading the word, sharing with everyone what is actually going on here at this airport.
You can check out the "LA Next" website at www.la-next.com. You can expect all other action at the Tom Bradley Terminal to start flying in in early 2013. Signing off from LAX, I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
According to airport officials, no money has been used from the city's general fund for LAX construction. The central utility plant project at Los Angeles International Airport recently marked a major construction milestone. Rasha Goel takes us to the topping-out ceremony where the last piece of steel was put into place, signifying good luck.
The central utility plant project at Los Angeles International Airport recently marked a major construction milestone with a topping-out ceremony. The last piece of structural steel was put into place, signifying good luck and success with the building.
We're building a new central utility plant, or CUP, as it's called. The CUP provides all of the heating and air conditioning for all of the buildings in the central terminal area.
This is the heartbeat of LAX. So even though it may not have a curved roof, it is what it takes in order to be sure that everything else here operates the way it's supposed to.
The plant, upon completion, will increase efficiency by nearly 70%. The new central utility plant, which will be four stories high and cover a 64,000-square-foot area, will replace the 50-year-old existing utility plant.
The existing plant was brought online in 1960, so it's literally, it's museum-quality vintage. In fact, if the plant breaks down, we have to actually machine the parts to fix it. Secondly, it doesn't have enough capacity to serve the new Tom Bradley Terminal and all the rest of the building that we're doing.
The old plant, shown here, will be demolished and a thermal storage reservoir will be built in its place. And it will help save the cost of energy.
Which allows us to run the utilities at night when we're paying a lower rate, and then use the cold water during the day and not have to run the energy plant.
And for many Angelenos, the construction of this plant has created new jobs.
It's great to have guys working. There's a lot of guys that have been out of work, and I think that is what the one concern is right now. This is generating work.
Work that officials expect to be completed by 2014.
The new LAX central utility plant is a LEED-certified facility. While a World War II legend moves closer to a final home in the Port of San Pedro, Gil Reyes explains.
The Port of Los Angeles has released a draft environmental impact report for the USS Iowa Relocation Project. It's expected to bring the historic battleship to a permanent berth in San Pedro later this year. The Iowa was first commissioned in 1943 and was the namesake for an entire class of battleships. It saw action in the Atlantic and Pacific during World War II, the Korean War, and worldwide through the 1980s, before finally being decommissioned in 1990. The report outlines plans to relocate the battleship from San Francisco to berth 87 in San Pedro, where she will serve as a museum and educational facility. It describes how local resources will be impacted by the move and the related construction work necessary to make the Iowa viable as a museum. Gil Reyes for LA this week.
There's an increasing number of services available to people who are trying to get their small business off the ground. Gil Reyes reports on the improvements taking place at LA's business assistance centers.
City leaders say it's reason to celebrate. There is now more help for those companies that are expected to leave Los Angeles out of the recession.
Small businesses are the backbone of the local economy. 325,000 small businesses in LA, and by the way, they look like LA. Disproportionately, the fastest-growing businesses are Latina-owned businesses, as a matter of fact. Yes.
And those small companies could be receiving a boost with newly expanded services at six business source centers throughout Los Angeles. All of them, including this one in Boyle Heights, now have full-time staff to help business owners sort through the permitting process. Centers will also offer more business workshops and one-on-one counseling. With all this and more, LA City Councilmember Jose Weisar says Boyle Heights is on a roll.
In the last three years alone, we've seen over $2 billion in new public project improvements. A new rail line, four new schools, a new police station, every park in Boyle Heights has had some type of improvement.
Weisar says improved business assistance programs have also boosted the chances of small businesses to compete for city projects. A new local preference ordinance also gives LA-based companies an edge on competitive bidding. All of these are tricks of the trade that you can learn here and at five other assistance centers throughout Los Angeles. In Boyle Heights, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Besides the Boyle Heights office, there are business assistance centers in the San Fernando Valley, South LA, Central City, and the West Side. Well, a long-stalled project moves ahead: additional bike lanes in Venice, a sister-city agreement for a greener world, and the city council acts to protect incarcerated youth. All that and more in City Beat. Mayor Villaregoza issued a statement recently applauding the Obama administration for moving forward with the construction of the new Los Angeles Federal Courthouse in downtown LA. The long-stalled project at the corner of Broadway and First Street replaced a Depression-era courthouse on Spring Street, which has security and asbestos problems. The mayor added that this significant federal project will create thousands of much-needed construction jobs over the next five years. At a time when unemployment remains high, a project of this magnitude is a welcome stimulus to our economy. 11th District Councilman Bill Rosenthal announced that work has begun on a new transportation project at one of Venice's busiest streets. Called the Main Street Road Diet, the project between Windward Circle and the city of Santa Monica will reduce travel lanes to one in each direction while creating bike lanes on both sides of the street. "We are laying the foundation for a truly multimodal system here in Los Angeles," Rosenthal says, "that will offer people a choice to travel by bike, bus, automobile, or even foot." Councilmember Tom LaBange joined with his counterpart from Los Angeles sister city Berlin to sign a friendship agreement. The partnership promotes clean and green industry in the North Atwater Area here in LA and the Marzon-Hellersdorf District in Berlin.
It's an important opportunity to develop a green tech zone, and we can work to that. Non-binding, there's no taxpayers' money involved, it's just to encourage the relationship, the people-to-people, that makes so much difference.
The cooperative relationship between the two cities goes back a long way. Berlin became LA's sixth sister city in March of 1967. The city council has unanimously approved Councilmember Tony Cardenas's resolution to support the National Rape Elimination Commission's recommendation. The resolution supports banning the placement of young people under the age of 18 in adult jails and prisons.
Statistics show that when they are put in those situations, that when it comes to rape, it happens at a much, much higher level. And this is something, to me, that's very logical and very American for us to make sure that we do not participate or allow this to take place in our local and/or federal
Helping kids develop a lifelong love of learning is priceless. That's why Mayor Villaregoza stopped by the 99th Street School in Watts recently to help celebrate the fourth anniversary of Donuts with Dad. The program "Donuts with Dads" brings together over 200 men from the surrounding community into the classroom to read to students.
Donuts for Dads was a way to get dads and uncles and brothers and cousins and male figures into the school. So the kids get to see someone there, a male figure, a positive male figure emphasizing education, promoting reading.
Several years ago, a previous principal discovered that 50% of students at the school didn't have a father living in their own household.
So as a school, we've really tried to come together and think about different programs that we could create to encourage more active male involvement in our school, in our classrooms, whether it's through a morning program like this or through more in-depth mentoring.
Peter tried and tried to whistle. He went... but he couldn't. So instead, he began to turn himself around.
"Donuts with Dads" is only one part of 99th Street's parent engagement program, built on the principle that the parent is the child's first teacher and should be an equal partner with the school in their child's education. Members of the Los Angeles Police and Fire Departments also stopped by to read to kids and very likely shared a donut or two. Classic music, cutting-edge movies, and traditional Native American culture all come together on this week's Things to Do.
On Saturday, February 4th, from 8:00 to 10:00 p.m., enjoy the artistry of a cappella dupe quintet, "Street Corner Renaissance," led by NAACP Award winner Maurice Kitchen. The group has opened for everyone, from Chuck Berry to Cool in the Gang and Boyz II Men. Selections include a tribute to Sam Cooke, a gospel celebration, and a civil rights anthem. In San Pedro at the Grand Annex, 434 West Sixth Street in San Pedro. For more information, visit www.grandvision.org. Also on Saturday, consider attending the Eurochannel Short Films Tour, a film festival beginning at 7:00 p.m. at the Theater Raymond Cabaz. Through a selection of short films, take a trip across Europe through the eyes of 54 innovative directors. Tonight's program features 10 to 12 shorts with a complimentary wine and cheese intermission. Theater Raymond Cabaz is located at 10361 West Pico Boulevard, near the intersection of Pico and Beverly Glen. For more information, check out www.trk.us.com. Every Sunday, 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. is American Indian Culture Day at the Autry National Center. Bring the entire family to learn more about American Indian cultures with storytelling, music, traditional and contemporary games, hands-on learning, and more. There's something new every Sunday. For more information, visit www.theautry.org. Remember, you can find links for these and other events on LA this week's Facebook page. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. I'm Rasha Goel.
Thanks a lot, Rasha. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Brian Ojima. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also check us out on our Facebook page for more information on some of the stories we've covered. We'll see you back here next week for another edition of LA this week. So long, everybody.
Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
Hi, I'm Craig Erwin in Los Angeles.
Hi, I'm Trenton Rayway, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Good morning. I'd like to first ask everybody to quiet down a little bit. I want to welcome you to City Hall. My name is Herb Wesson, and I am the President of the Los Angeles City Council. Our council meetings are on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, 10 o'clock. Our meetings are open to the public, so you're all welcome, and so that you can, you know, give public comment or just watch your government work. With that said, we do have a quorum. This council meeting isn't session. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
All right, Mr. Englander moves.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Englander moves. Mr. Buscayeno, second. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Perry moves. Mr. Zine, second. At this point, why don't we try to get through the agenda before we start today's Black History Month celebration?
Mr. President, before doing so, there is a request to continue Item 2 to February 28. That's Item 2 to February 28.
Without objection.
And there's a request to continue Item 10 to February 10. Again, that's Item 10 to February 10.
Without objection. So let's go through the remaining item.
Very good, sir. Item 1 is an item notice for public hearing.
Okay, any cards?
No, sir.
Members, specials? Then why don't we, let us open and close the public hearing. Now let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, Items 3 through 8 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Without objection. Mr. Clerk, do we have any cards on these items, on Items 3 through 8?
Apparently, they're coming in now, sir.
They're coming in now.
Sir, we have cards on 4, 5...
4, 5.
4 and 5, sir.
Special members, any specials? Okay, now let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, Item 9 is scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold it on the desk?
Yes, let's hold it on the desk.
Very good. That leaves only the special meeting, and it's a bit too early for that.
Yes, it is.
It's scheduled for 10:15, sir.
10:15. All right. Now, today, we're going to have our African-American Heritage Month celebration, so we are waiting for our honored guests at this point in time. Mr. Krikorian?
I'd like to ask for reconsideration on Number 1, please.
On Number 1, without objection. In fact, Mr. Clerk, do we need to, we need to vote on reconsideration? No, Mr. Krikorian wanted to reconsider Item 1, so...
Mr. President, first, we'd have a vote for, a vote to reconsider, and then at that point in time, the matter would be before you.
Okay, then let's, on reconsideration, members, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Mr. Krikorian, would you like to speak on that now?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd simply move that the amount of the penalty be reduced by $500.
Mr. Laban, second. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right. Does anybody else want to take something up? Oh, no. We are ready, I'm told. Okay, it's my understanding that they are coming down the rotunda. They should be here momentarily. Mr. Zine, you want to just, oh, Mr. Laban, you can, you...
I want to step in front of Mr. Zine.
Why don't you kill some time for me, thank you.
Mr. President, I just want to welcome everybody here, but also this great building, built in 1928. Look up to the ceiling and the work of the artists, the architects that know to build it. This is the John Ferraro Chambers, and know that on the top of the building is the Tom Bradley Tower. And if you have time in the later festivities, go to the top of the City Hall, to the Tom Bradley Tower, and enjoy the great view of the City of the Angels, and think of the people who went before us and who built this City Hall, the grand City Hall of Los Angeles in 1928. And then certainly after that, we invited the world to the 32 games in Los Angeles for the Olympic Games, and on and on is our history. A great period of time in Los Angeles, and this is this grand City Hall. So official welcome from a friend to Herb Wesson. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Laban. Mr. Zine, can you top that?
Yes, I can. I'd like to let the audience know that our President, the Honorable Councilmember Herb Wesson, is the first African-American President of the Los Angeles City Council. And he is a President, unlike many Presidents, who reaches out and embraces on the level citywide throughout the City of the Angels. Now, there are Presidents of the United States, Presidents of the county, and here we have the greatest President in the history of City Hall, Councilmember Herb Wesson, who's going to give me the opportunity to introduce our former President, the Honorable Eric Garcetti. Former President Eric Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. As we're awaiting the beginning of this, not only is it important that Mr. Laban told us the roots of this building, but the roots of this city, in which the pobladores that came here, the 42 settlers to this land, that were all Spaniards, over 20 of them trace their ancestry back to Africa. And that is such an important thing, as we said, sorry? 26 of them, to be exact, trace their ancestry back to Africa. So while we are a very old city, older than Washington, D.C., in fact, we also know that our roots are rooted in the African history and African tradition, and it's a great celebration that we will have today. And with that, I'm going to toss it over to Mr. Krikorian. Come on, you've got to keep it going.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Mr. Zine?
And we have our newest Councilmember, who just came into place, Councilmember from South...
Mr. Zine?
Yes, sir.
We don't have to stall anymore.
Oh, all right.
Okay?
In that case, I'll sit down and I'll shut up!
I appreciate all of the members, your creativity to fill in the gap. At this point in time, I'd like to bring in a group called Chosen, and after, as Chosen comes down, they will be the vanguard for the mayor and our honorees. So ladies and gentlemen, let's have a round of applause for our mayor, Chosen, and our honorees.
By the waters of Babylon, where we sat down, and where we wept, when we remember Zion. By the waters of Babylon, where we sat down, and where we wept, when we remember Zion. Well, we God carried us away to captivity, required us to sing this song. How can we sing our holy song in this rain? Well, we God carried us away to captivity, required us to sing this song. How can we sing our holy song in this rain? So let the words of my mouth and the meditation of my heart be acceptable in thy sight, oh, Lord. By the waters of Babylon, where we sat down, and where we wept, when we remember Zion. By the waters of Babylon, where we sat down, and where we wept, when we remember Zion. Well, we God carried us away to captivity, required us to sing this song. How can we sing our holy song in this rain? Well, we God carried us away to captivity, required us to sing this song. How can we sing our holy song in this rain? So let the words of my mouth and the meditation of my heart be acceptable in thy sight, oh,
Thank you, thank you, Chosen. Let's give them a better round of applause than that. One heck of a way to start our African-American Heritage Month off. And members, before I present the mayor, I'm going to ask that we all hold our comments until after the ceremony. With that said, to those of you that, that maybe don't know this, the mayor has taken great pride in celebrating all of the Heritage Months that we have. But when it comes to African-American Heritage Month, to me, it seems like he kicks it up a notch. So ladies and gentlemen, the mayor of the greatest city on the planet, Antonio Villarigosa. Thank you, Council President Wesson, for that kind introduction. And I want to begin this year's African-American Heritage Month celebration by marking an historic milestone. In 1973, Angelenos made history when they elected the city's first African-American Chief Executive, Tom Bradley. And as you've heard me say many, many times, I stand here on the shoulders of Tom Bradley, on the shoulders of a civil rights movement and a Voting Rights Act that opened up the country and the city to me. And so it's important for us to celebrate all of our milestones, and not since 1781, when this city was founded, has the Los Angeles City Council had an African-American President. And so I'd like to acknowledge my friend, longtime friend and colleague, on being the city's first African-American Council President. I couldn't be prouder to say to my friend, you've been Speaker of the California State Assembly, and now President of this chamber, and I look forward to working with you and to great days ahead. What's a brother supposed to do? That's right. That's exactly right. On a more somber note, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge a friend of mine. I know a friend of yours, Don Cornelius. Don Cornelius, I felt like was in my living room. Those of you who used to watch Soul Train, were religious, almost all of you, if you did, you were religious about it, trying to learn the latest dance move. He was always so cool. He was one of those people who was an icon and a role model and a great friend, and I'd like to have a moment of silence for my friend, Don Cornelius. Thank you. Once again, I want to acknowledge and thank, I was explaining to the honorees, the mayor doesn't just walk into these chambers, he has to get invited, and I'm always thankful when the council invites me into these chambers. Thank you for acknowledging, once again, this very important opportunity for us to celebrate what makes L.A. so different. I like to say, when they asked me to describe L.A., that L.A. doesn't care who your father was. In my case, they don't care that I didn't have one, and with the new federal court decision, they don't care if you have two of them. Yeah, that's right. This is a city that says, "Just do it." And it's important in this city, the most diverse city anywhere in the United States, including the city that you come from, my friend, every city in the United States, there's no, there's no city, large city that I know of that is as diverse, and that has 70%, more than 70% of its population coming from Latin America, Asia, and Africa. We come from 140 countries, we speak 200 languages, we have 37 nationalities that have the largest population here. And as Mr. Garcetti and I have said again and again, even from the founding of this city, the first 44 settlers from New Spain would, would become Mexico, the first 44. 26 of them traced their ancestry back to Africa, something that not too many people know, but because of Mr. Garcetti and others, we now know more and more of the rich influence that this city has had from the very beginning. And in that vein, I think it's very, very important for us to tell that story. The reason why I put as much effort in all of these Heritage Months isn't just to have a celebration here in the council chambers or outside, it's because it's important in this town that we all acknowledge that we're better for the diversity that we revel in, that we're better for the histories, the contributions of the many people that have made this city great. And I was saying to our honorees today that one of the most beautiful things to watch is the essay contest or the art contest, where a young kid who traces their family to Italy is celebrating the great contributions of Arroza Parks, or a young kid who traces their ancestry to China, acknowledging the great contributions of Dolores Huerta. And when you think about that, that's why this is so important. It's not just to have a party, it's not just to acknowledge our honorees, it's to celebrate who we are. So, yes. This goes later, right? Yes. I want to thank you again for hosting us, and let me just also acknowledge Chosen, who just sang a cappella for us, and any of us who heard, any of us who heard Mitt Romney sing "The Star Spangled Banner" the other day knows it's very difficult singing a cappella. Yeah, you have to have a voice. The best music doesn't just get us to tap our feet and sing along, it steers our soul. And again, I want to thank Chosen for that truly soul-inspiring and stirring performance. Let's give them another round of applause. Now, the theme of this year's African-American Heritage Month is stepping back into the future. The idea is simple. To know the future, we have to know the past. When we understand our history, then we know how far we've come and how far we still have to go. And I think we all acknowledge we've come a long way. We've come a long way from the days of open discrimination and rigid segregation, but I think we also acknowledge that we still haven't arrived quite yet. We're closer, the promised land is nearer, we can see it more clearly, but we're not there yet. There's still too much inequality, there's still too many young kids of color stuck in bad schools, the achievement gap is growing, there's too much violence in many of our neighborhoods, and there are still too many dreams deferred and opportunity denied. But we're here because we know that we will get here. We will get there because we've learned from the past, we've learned that we're stronger together than apart, we've learned that when we cross lines of color and class and work hand in hand, that this country can... hand in hand, that this country can be a more perfect union, that it can find its promise, its glorious promise, a promise of liberty and justice for all. Now, before I introduce this month's honorees, I'd like to make three special recognitions. Thank you. First, I'd like to bring up someone who many of you recognize from the hallways of City Pam has been a part of our city family for almost a quarter of a century, she's faithfully served three mayors, that's not easy. She doesn't miss deadlines, that's even more difficult. She'd go to the end of the earth to get a council file signed on time, and she's always done it with her signature grace and her good humor. Pam, you deserve the rest. And on behalf of our city family, let me thank you for your service to the city of Los Angeles. We'll take this right here. We'll do this.
We love you, Pam.
Thank you. You got some love back there. How many of you love the movies? Well, here in Tinseltown, we love the movies because they take us to new places and they help us see the world with new eyes. For the last 20 years, the Pan African Film Festival has brought the best of black cinema from around the world here to Los Angeles. The festival has opened our eyes to the importance of tolerance and cross-cultural understanding. Our art scene is more vibrant, our cultural conversation is richer because of the accomplishments of the Pan African Film Festival. I'm behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I want to acknowledge 20 years. And I want to remind Babu, I've been, in the last six, I've been a five of them.
Five of them.
Yeah.
No, all of them.
No, five of the six. We gotta do this.
That's deliberate.
Finally, I'd like to recognize Dr. Genevieve Shepherd. Like me and my mama, she's a native Angelino. She's principal of Tom Bradley Environmental Science and Humanities Charter magnet. She's a lifelong educator and community leader and knows the power of education to transform lives. If that weren't enough, she's the immediate past president of Our Authors Studies Club. It is impossible to imagine African American Heritage Month without Our Authors Study Club. Thank you, Genevieve, for your leadership, your commitment to the African American community and our entire city. I'd like to present you with this acknowledgement. I'm honored today to present African American Heritage honorees and awards to three extraordinary individuals. The Spirit of Los Angeles Award, Cheryl Lee Ralph. Let me offer a little quote. "I'm not the dream that you've had before, I'm the dream that'll give you more and more." That's what Cheryl Lee character Dina Jones sings to us in Dreamgirls, the hit Broadway And those words are emblematic of what Cheryl Lee Ralph's career has been all about. A dream which has never stopped giving. Though most of us know Cheryl through her Tony-nominated performance for Dreamgirls, her life has been so much more. At age 19, she became the youngest female to ever graduate from Rutgers University. And after moving to the city of the angels, she soon discovered that very little roles existed for women of color, even talented, intelligent women of color like her. She returned to the East Coast and blazed a trail with a career-spanning film, television, and the Broadway stage. In film, starring opposite leading stars in The Distinguished Gentleman, The Mighty Quinn, and Mistress. Or on the small screen, starring on the TV hit shows It's a Living, Designing Women, and Moesha. Cheryl has never been afraid to tackle new and challenging roles, but perhaps her greatest role has been away from the bright lights. Decades ago, as her star began to shine, she saw the lives of so many of her friends cut short by HIV and AIDS. Cheryl vowed never to turn her back, never to remain silent. She created Divas Simply Singing, one of the, one of the signature events benefiting HIV causes. She founded the Diva Foundation, which reminds us that all of us are touched by this disease. Her one-woman show, Sometimes I Cry, keeps alive the memory of women infected and affected by HIV and AIDS. For her awesome range of talent and passionate advocacy, I'm proud to honor the original Dreamgirl, Cheryl Lee Ralph, with the Spirit of Los Angeles Award. Thank you.
Thank you. I am an endangered species, but I sing no victim's song. I am a woman, I am an artist, and I know where my voice belongs. I want to thank, I want to thank the mayor, and I want to thank everybody connected with honoring me with this award today. As I stand here and I look at Herb Wesson sitting there, and I look at my good friend Jan Perry sitting there, I think about when I was a young girl, just coming to Los Angeles at 19, and then one of the greatest mayors ever, Tom Bradley. Oh, he made such an investment in me as a person and a human being, and said, "Cheryl Lee Ralph, I expect great things from you." And 22 years ago, when I developed Divas Simply Singing, talking about HIV and AIDS and the need to care about people, Tom Bradley said, "As long as I'm the mayor, every day is Diva Day." And to have done that work in this year, at 22 years, Divas Simply Singing becomes the longest consecutive-running musical AIDS benefit in the country, and it all started right here in L.A. So I thank, I thank the latest, greatest mayor of Los Angeles. I say gracias. Este hombre es muy bonito. Yo dice gracias para todo. I'm so happy to call Los Angeles my home, and I will continue to carry on with the Spirit of Los Angeles.
I love it.
Thank you.
I love it, yeah. Wow, that was beautiful.
Oh, my God, that was gorgeous.
Whoa. That's a hard act to follow. So now, now, Tom said, "Every day is Diva Day?"
Every day.
Every day is Diva Day, I declare. Do I have a motion? Without objection, such will be the order.
You continue the work of Tom Bradley and continue it, so give credit to the mayor as you always do.
That's what we did. That's what we did.
I know, but in the motion.
In the motion. In the motion, yes, in the motion. I second that motion. Always giving credit to Tom Bradley. You know, in fact, speaking of Tom Bradley, his song was "The Impossible Dream." Do you remember that? No, that was his song, because it described his journey. You know, growing up in Texas, coming to Los Angeles, humble beginnings, that was his song. And so the Dream of Los Angeles Award honoree is fitting. Dream of Los Angeles Award is Walter Mosley. Now, Mr. Garcetti knows quite well that Walter Mosley isn't one to write about the prominent or the privileged among us. Through his work, he's often drawn our attention to the poor, the working class, the forgotten. He knows that it's the writer's duty to unsettle and create inconvenience, not limited by genre or style. He's written crime novels, political essays, science fiction, and even young adult books. A bestselling author of some 38 books to date, he is a leading man of letters and a leading African American man of letters as well. His work transcends America, as his work has been translated into 23 languages. Born in Watts. You know, if you looked at my travel schedule, you see I spend more time in Watts than any community in Los Angeles. And I'll tell you why, because Watts is worth it. And Watts is a great community. He was the son of an African American father and a Polish Jewish mother. Walter Mosley's roots are the story of Los Angeles, a city whose hallmark is diversity. While much of the world knows him as the creator of the hard-boiled private eye, Easy Rollins, one of his real achievements has been an entire body of fiction that chronicles the black experience in America and thrust African American protagonists into the spotlight. For his prolific work, tireless pen, a fearless creative range, I am honored to present Walter Mosley with the Dream of Los Angeles Award.
Nobody wants to go after either the mayor or Cheryl Lee. I remember, I first met the mayor in these chambers when he was here before he became mayor, and he was so welcoming and generous and friendly at that time. I have a very short little thing that I'll read to you, but I want to say, the thing that was great about Los Angeles, all of L.A., when I was a kid, my parents both worked for the Board of Education, the L.A. USD, and it was, it was, it was all of us, you know, it was, you know, blacks, Chicanos, it was, it was the Koreans and the Chinese, it was the Jews. It was, it was everybody, it was everybody was together, everybody was working together, because people had to work together because it was growing so fast that you really couldn't keep people out. So everybody was together, got to know each other, got to love each other, and that was a great experience. But the most important thing about Los Angeles is what happened, the things that happened in Los Angeles changed America and changed the world. And the things that changed around us actually changed the world for us. The 20th century is a very isolationist period, but the 21st century, a century that we helped usher into being, is a place for all of us, and it's kind of hard to know, to tell the difference, which is why I think it's so wonderful that everybody, you know, takes a part of African American history. And just the thing I want to talk about, the Dream Award, this little paragraph here is, "Los Angeles is the dream. Everyone from everywhere around the world hears L.A. whispering to them on their radios and their TV sets and darkened theaters, and stories of a place where you can sleep comfortably under the stars and eat off of the trees in the morning." Is a land where you can shed the skin of your history and head for an uncharted future that would be impossible anywhere else in the world. For Los Angelenos, any goal is achievable. We live side by side with the sky and sea, speak innumerable languages, have created an Eden out of the desert, grew from a population of 200,000 to tens of millions, and all of that was before breakfast. The rest of our day is truly miraculous. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
That was absolutely beautiful, Mr. Mosley. Let me just say, when you're mayor, your job is to advocate for your city. And when people write the kind of stanzas that you did about this town, it's important for us to share that, because this is a great city, and we acknowledge the great contributors to our city. Congratulations, Walter Mosley. The hope of Los Angeles honoree is Dr. Keith Black. Any diagnosis of cancer can be devastating news. My mama died of cancer, and I think all of us have been touched by it. When cancer strikes the brain, the very core of your identity as a human being is shaken. The diagnosis is terrifying. But for countless patients faced with this diagnosis, hope has a name, and it is Dr. Now, Dr. Black's career literally started off with a bang. When he was eight years old, he blew up his family kitchen. He blew it up with a chemistry set his father had given him. He sought to quench an insatiable thirst for knowledge and discovery. Now, just knowing that he's performed over 5,000 surgeries to remove brain tumors in his career, we're glad he blew up the kitchen. Dr. Keith Al Black is an internationally renowned neurosurgeon and Dr. Keith L. Black is an internationally renowned neurosurgeon and scientist. He serves as the chairman of the Department of Neurosurgery, the director of the Maxine Dunnett Neurosurgical Institute at Cedar Sinai Medical Center. He's a man on the cutting edge of science, changing the way we treat brain diseases and disorders. Dr. Black's pioneering research has helped design ways to deliver chemotherapeutic drugs directly into the brain. His groundbreaking research has also focused on vaccines to improve the body's immune response to tumors, along with developing technologies to better understand and treat them. And above all, he's leading the charge in giving patients a better quality of life. Although Time Magazine has honored him as one of the heroes in medicine, he admits that his heroes are his patients. We're fortunate that today, through programs he founded, such as Cedar Sinai's Brainworks Program, our young people from underserved communities are exposed to the wonder of science and medicine. For being a leader, a scientist, and most importantly, for being a herald of hope in the City of Angels, I am proud to honor Dr. Keith Black with the Hope of Los Angeles Award.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'm honored and humbled to receive the Hope of LA Award from the City of Los Angeles, which is truly, as we all know, one of the great cities of the world. As a brain surgeon at one of the best hospitals in the country, Cedar Sinai, I get to see medical miracles every day, but I also see the challenges in healthcare for caring for a growing uninsured population, the hardships of losing jobs and losing health insurance. And as a father, I see the challenges in our educational system, which is why we formed Brainworks to start 7th and 8th graders being introduced into the wonders of other careers in science and medicine and technology. And as an African-American male, I see the declining numbers of African-American men of color graduating from high school and are in college becoming scientists and doctors and businessmen. Yet I still believe in the human spirit, the human emotion of hope. Hope promotes the belief in a positive outcome related to events and circumstances in one's life. It is the feeling that what we want can be had and the events will turn out for the best. The generations before us that sacrificed much and had the courage to fight for a better life, not necessarily for themselves, but for generations yet to be born, even as they face great diversity, had hope. So today, I'm very proud to accept, as an Angelino, the Hope Award because I too have hope with the expect and confidence that our mayor and our city council and our leaders and we collectively will continue to make Los Angeles an even better place for the generations to come. Thank you.
And now I, Mr. President, that concludes our presentation, except that we...
You know what, Mr. Mayor? I had lost one of my notes and I didn't know that Chosen was supposed to do two numbers for us. So maybe we should ask these lovely young ladies to come up.
That would be wonderful. Can we do that?
Get us jazzed up again and then, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you. Ladies and gentlemen, Chosen! Chosen, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I almost forgot. I almost made a big mistake. I think I need to afford my members an opportunity to speak and we will begin with Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I wanted to acknowledge the honorees today because each one in their own special way saves people's lives. Now, I'd like to start with my dina, Cheryl Lee Ralph. And I was at your show today this year and I would love to say the introduction that they gave you when you came out on stage because I've never heard anything like it, but I'll leave that to you. But she is an extraordinary woman because she has for years taught people how to empower themselves and save their own lives through safe sexual practices. And Cheryl, I want to say thank you for that. And Dr. Black, I'm almost speechless when it comes to talking about you because of your extraordinary gifts, your willingness to share, your ability to not only save lives but to extend people's lives, and your enthusiasm for ongoing research and to broaden and open up into new universes so that you can share the gifts that you've been given with everyone else. And for Walter Mosley, every time you publish another book, you give a piece of yourself to our world, our society, to teach people the power of the written and the spoken word. And this is what I think we as a community, as a culture, as African-Americans should stand for, is to respect the past, understand the teachings of the past and to not forget them, to have ethics, to have dignity, to treasure our families, to be open and embracing to others, and to move forward into the future and to move forward into the future without fear. Because we are free and we are liberated, we are intelligent, we are educated, and it's our obligation to pull other people along with us. And if you want to live the true principles of what it means to be an African-American during African-American History Month and every other month in the year, these are the people to show you the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Garcetti.
Beautifully said, Ms. Perry, and thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for laying the table, the beginning of this city's history. And for everybody that is here, we have such rich history and we celebrate nationally the names that everybody knows, King and Malcolm X and the people who came before us. But it's also an important moment to remember our local history and our California history, to remember in 1793 that the first black mayor of this city was actually a man named Francisco Reyes in 1793, that a governor in 1831, Emmanuel Victoria, was elected and Pio Pico, one of the greatest, and a street that bears his name, was a black man here in this city and governor for this state. We remember Mary Pleasant, and tomorrow we celebrate the birthday of a great woman, Rosa Parks, and I share her birthday. But before Rosa Parks stood up on a bus, Mary Pleasant stood up on a streetcar in San Francisco in 1868, I think it was, because the streetcar would not let a black woman on the streetcar. And she got $500 from a court, and even though it was overturned by the State Supreme Court, it led to, in the 1890s, one of the first laws in the nation saying that black people had to be allowed onto streetcars here in America. And Biddy Mason, who not only founded First AME, but is also somebody who built up a fortune right here where we are today, around us, as a woman who started her life as a slave but built up a fortune that's worth $60 million in today's terms, $300,000 in the 19th century right here. And as we celebrate Tom Bradley, we also remember and celebrate the ascension of others like Bernard Parks and Herb Wesson, people like Karen Bass, the people who have been amongst us, Florence Griffith Joyner here from Watts, also Charles Mingus, the great musicians, the people who have been a part of our lifeblood that Cheryl and Walter and Keith are a part of. And so today, as we celebrate African-American History Month, not just in this country, we celebrate it in this city and in this state because Los Angeles has always been a great African-American city and always will be.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. LA's city's ambassador. See, I didn't even have to call his name. Tom Lavanc.
There you go, I got that, I got that. We're talking about Tom Bradley first, I was on his youth council, Paul Coretts was on his youth council, Ed Reyes was on his youth council, Wendy Gru was on his youth council, but I'm the oldest youth standing right now, so I just want to get that square. But congratulations to the honorees, which is so special. Mr. Mayor, thank you for all that you do because it does bring the city together. And when we talk, and I like to talk about Tom Bradley, I worked for John Ferraro, who was a great friend of Tom Bradley, except for one year where they ran against mayor and John made one mistake there. Don't run against the man who led the Olympics, even though John brought the Olympics as it did, but that's history. But here we are today to remember our history. And I just want to shout out to the gentleman that I know right there, the Buffalo Soldiers, who I see every Memorial Day and every Veterans Day in my district. Want to shout out there. And I want to shout out to number 22 in the program, but number one in our hearts, Elgin Baylor and his beautiful wife Barbara Baylor, a zoo commissioner for the Los Angeles Zoo. And last I want to shout out is the late, great Milt Davis, who the Davis family grew up on the east side, east to central, all went to Jefferson High. He was a tremendous influence on many young people, including those who went to John Marshall High as an educator and Los Angeles City College. He played in the National Football League for four years, still holds the record, 27 interceptions in 43 games, but because of the practices of the time, and this is back in the 50s, he chose education and through education, he helped many more people. Just a shout out to the late, great Milt Davis, our mentor, Milt Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Ambassador. Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Of course, I want to commend all the honorees that are here, but I particularly wanted to give a shout out to Professor Black, who not only is one of America's great neurosurgeons, but he's one of Council District Five's great neurosurgeons. Having spent 10 years at UCLA and around 15 at Cedar Sinai, doing amazing work that the mayor only began to describe, doing research to prevent tumors and treat tumors, and it means a lot to me because my mother died of brain cancer in 1980. And back then, when she had that diagnosis, she had no hope and the end was quick. But now, largely because of what you've done, people have hope with that diagnosis and they have options and things continue to become more hopeful in the future. So on behalf of the council, I would like to thank you for all your good work and all the hope that you've given to so many people.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. When Martin Luther King said, "A lie cannot live," we can show our children that you can learn. It's a lie that they cannot. Today is about demonstrating that to our kids, to our community, and you're living proof that it can be done. So that lie continues to be eliminated because of your presence. On behalf of all the children that are being told right now that, "Don't worry about that, you can't do it. You cannot become the doctor, you cannot become the artist, you can't become the writer, you cannot become the mayor." You are living proof it can be done, and I thank you for eliminating that lie. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Reyes is the president pro tem of this council. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. To our newest member, good man, Steve Buscayeno.
Joe.
Steve. It's not Steve, no, Joe Buscayeno.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. It's my second day, so we'll give him a pass, we'll give him a pass on that. Should we cite him, Dennis, on that or? All right. Well, thank you. I stand with my colleagues and, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. It's African-American Heritage Month, I want to, just on behalf of my constituents, congratulate the awardees, most importantly, Mr. Mosley. Born and raised in Watts, California, you are a fine example to my constituents in Watts. You have impacted so many people in Watts and you are a prime example that success should not only be a street name in Watts. So I want to thank you, commend you. Cheryl, my wife and I are, we're growing up in the performing arts world and down at the Harbor area, just love watching what you've done on TV and on film. Thank you so much and congratulations on your award today. And Dr. Black, unbelievable story. Thank you so much for what you've done in saving lives and most importantly, you mentioned... And most importantly, you mentioned the young kids that you've also have impacted. Thank you so much. You know, Kevin Bingham put together a fine quote, "It is understood that those who pursue their dreams have chosen what can become, a difficult path to travel. It is also understood that those who choose to follow their dreams are inherently passionate, but most of all, they are strong-hearted. They push forward despite the resistance." And on behalf of the city and my constituents in Council District 15, I want to commend all three awardees. And something that, a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King that I have held true to my heart is, "We must never lose infinite hope." And someone who I looked up to as part of the city family with the LAPD, Mayor Tom Bradley, who rose the ranks within the LAPD. And he has been a role model for me growing up in the Los Angeles Police Department. So congratulations, another fine day in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Joey B. Mr. Alarcon.
Steve's a great speaker, huh? You know, when we, yeah, just call me Bob. When we do these events, it reminds me of so many things. But when I used to teach at San Fernando High, excuse me, San Fernando Middle School, I remember two African American students who, they were challenged. They were having a tough time with their performance. And so I was trying to be a good teacher and get them to understand more about their history. And so we were doing world geography, and I asked them if they would be interested. I pulled out a book on Africa and said, "Would you be interested in studying about Africa?" And they looked at me and they said, "Why I want to study about Africa? I'm from here." And I thought, you know, wow. You know, it's often said by many and many different ways that if you don't know your history, it really weakens your foundation. And so I think we've come a long, long way from 35 years ago when I taught at San Fernando Middle School. I want to say for these honorees in particular, the giving isn't just in what you have provided to the African American community. Indeed, each and every one of you have given so much to all of us. And for that, I think we've come a long way. So thank you so much for what you give to us. Thank you for the gifts that you are going to be giving because I know you will continue to do so. And thank you so much for being such a great representation of the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Richard. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wow is my first word. My colleagues know I say great, 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 great a lot when I'm really happy. I said a lot of that today. The three of you honorees typify the beauty of the diversity of all of us. A man of letters, a great voice that just takes you in a positive spot, and a doctor that inspires us all and gives us hope. We can never give up hope. First time I thought of that was in 1967, when I was with Martin Luther King in Cleveland, Ohio, when Carl Stokes was elected the first African mayor of a major city. And we sat together and chatted, and he inspired me with his commitment to social change, no matter what. He said, "You feel good about it." And the next major moment for me was Tom Bradley. I did a television show, some 3,000, the very first show, Tom Bradley was my guest. And he looked at me and he said, "Bill, I know this will be the beginning of a long show that the community will love." And I went, "Whoa." I then called a cable press conference, and he was my very first guest. And his energy kept me going and was very positive. And of course, Los Angeles, the city we love, the diversity here is extraordinary. The mayor said it all about that. Together, we're stronger than we would be separate. So let it keep our spirit together, and God bless you, and God bless African American Month.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Steve Zine.
Mr. Wesson is now suffering from memory loss. But that's okay. We still love you, Herb. The city council, the city chambers, the city of Los Angeles, I'm a native of Los Angeles. Worked with the LAPD for 33 years, and we've got a few members of the council who are now in law enforcement protecting and serving. And how far we've come, when 1968, when I entered the police academy and assigned to 77th Street Division shortly after that, two African American partners, Warren Lynch III and Lindsay Harmon, a guy who came from near Fairfax and Mirrors, a heavy Jewish community, into South Los Angeles. And these two brothers took care of this Lebanese who grew up in an environment north of Santa Monica Freeway, because you all remember what the Santa Monica Freeway was way back then, how far we've come, and we still have a ways to go. But this chamber and the acknowledgement and the respect that we showed to people in this diverse city, the strength that this city has, and our honorable mayor, who I served as a council member with, he sat on this side, was always there for the people. And I understand back when you were at UCLA, Mr. Mayor, you helped form the Black Students' Union, a Latino. High school, high school. You helped form that as a Latino reaching out. And your leadership, reaching out to people of this city, whether it's Chinese, Iranian, African American, Latino, this city reaches out and embraces. And it's this body of 15 elected officials that reach out and embrace. So to each and every one of you, we have a ways to go. We've made progress. But from the First AME church to all the different groups of the city of Los Angeles, where we don't suffer much racial discrimination, we suffer green discrimination because that's the discrimination of the dollar, the economic discrimination that we suffer in this city of the angels. And to the Buffalo Soldiers, God bless you, the Tuskegee Airmen and the Buffalo Soldiers, what you folks did for the United States of America, which you did for the people, to be commended. And I love the movie. I love singing. I love the movie. And to see you here, I need to get a photo with you. And Mr. Mosley, you didn't only pass out these books to the council members, but I said, "You know, I want to get his autograph. I want to get his autograph." And I opened it up to start reading, and lo and behold, Steve Zine, no, Dennis Zine. There you go. I appreciate it. God bless you all. This is a celebration that we continue every single year. It's very important. And welcome, Mr. Mayor, you always welcome these chambers. You are the leader of this city. We respect you for that, along with this entire chamber of people. So God bless you. Thank you very much. Great, great, great history here that we're celebrating. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis Zine. Mr. Mayor.
Before I introduce the African American Heritage Month calendar, I'd like to thank the Ernie Barnes family and the Ernie Barnes Family Foundation. If they could please stand. We thank them for the art we used on this year's invitation. We are always blessed to have great artists, but to have Ernie Barnes on the cover of the calendar is something quite special. Thank you so much. I'd also like to acknowledge the Department of Cultural Affairs and Olga Garay, who's here to my right, the committee, the Heritage Month Committee, who helped to put this together and done an incredible job. And I'd like to ask all of you to join me in the triforium. We can't be on the steps here because we're under a little construction, but before we do, let's go over and take a picture.
Okay. Congratulations. African American Heritage Month 2012.
There you are. You are the best.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. That was a very inspirational presentation. Mr. Clerk, let's move to the next item. Let's start the special meeting.
Mr. President, in recessing the regular meeting and going into the special, I'll now call the all, Alarcon Buscayeno, Cardenas Englander, Garcetti, Weisart, Coretts, Kirk Corian, LeBonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zine, and Wesson, 13 members present, and quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, the first item.
Item 11 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, sir.
Okay, we do have cards on item 11. We have one card, Mr. Arnold Sacks. Please come on up. Item 11 on special meeting. Mr. Sacks. Without consideration, item number 11 is without us, is before us. Mr. Sacks, please.
This is today. Yes, thank you. Item number 11 refers to a $20 million bond in bonds that are going to be sold for Tefra. So I'm wondering, because this is low-income housing supposedly, or housing of some general ilk towards that direction, can you not use these funds? And can you not use this process to take the place of redevelopment funds? Because we've heard how critically wounded the city of L.A. is now that the court has upheld the state's legislation to eliminate the redevelopment agencies. So what other avenues are available? Well, here's an avenue that's available, $20 million. And in today's newspaper, there's a story regarding a new stadium to be built in San Francisco. They're going to be using redevelopment funds to do that. So how can they be building a new stadium in San Francisco with redevelopment funds? And again, the amount of money. You're rolling over $200 million to add to a $400 million, over $400 million in redevelopment funds, that's $600 million. So why are you using bonds for $20 million when redevelopment agency is 600, over $600 million? And also, again, where the advisory committee in San Pedro was disbanded, is there an advisory committee for this housing project? Or is this just, or is that just one of those things that just happened because it's San Pedro? And it didn't take you long to become a waffle iron there, Mr. Councilman.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Matt Douth.
Yes, thank you. Nice to be here on the special meeting. And yeah, see, the CRA is dead, but the shenanigans go on. And that was the problem here yesterday with public comment, that people wanted to make a fair and legal protest with that CRA sign, and they were denied at first. And these are the kind of things that they're not happy about, and this is $20 million in revenue bonds that someone's going to have to pay back at some point for 127 units to acquire and rehabilitate. And they reek of cronyism. And it's just the way they do business here, and I'm just going to comment on it because somebody has to. See, what they do here is they buy out your First Amendment. And unless you're being nice and saying, you know, keeping it in some kind of, you have to think about every single word you say or you're going to be removed. So that's why it gets tough to talk about these things with real emotion and feeling. You know, and it just keeps going. you know, and it just keeps going on and on, they're just trying to buy people out and hand over money, and let someone else pay it back, it's just like the CRA, I would hate to get to the bottom of their balance sheet and find out who's on the hook for what.
Thank you very much. We'll go to Van Nuys, we have, I believe it's Rick Nightingale. Mr. Nightingale, Rick Nightingale.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale. Well, I'll tell you, we, all of us, we went, oh, hooray, CRA is going away by the buffalo, and, you know, it's going to be gone, well, we knew we wouldn't get the money back, but here we go again, right through the back door. Well, if we can't get them with that way, we'll just get, put bonds out, and lie about it, saying what, oh, what, that we aren't going to really have to pay for this in the long run, and you're just going to go same old, same old, building the same housing things that you want to do, right through the back door. You haven't learned your lesson yet. I believe in helping the poor, but you don't turn around and buy buildings and build buildings to turn around and go do the same thing. It's just not right, it's already been established, we've been talking about this CRA for years, we're not going to get the money back from CRA, because it's going to go, a lot of it's going to go to the school board, Brown already stated that, and you people are crying about the school board and no money for them, but then go right back to this bond measure, you just plan on putting it through with a bond. Everything is, you know, just, you've done it before, and if you people keep voting for these bonds, and you wonder where the money is going, they don't have the money, so they're going to come through the back door with every other way to turn around and make, to make you pay for something. When are they going, people are going to pay for it themselves? Things are hard, things, I realize that, but you're going to have to get off the back of the people that are barely making it today. That's just the way it is. You just don't understand that, well, I know you understand it, but you can care less, because you're playing politics. But there's people here that can't afford it, and you just keep on doing it, like putting the screws to you every time you turn around, I wish you would just listen to the people, thank you.
Thank you very much, our next speaker is Wayne Ketersky.
As once again proven, we're all Keterskys, just not as fortunate as Hal Ketersky, but two hours and, an hour and 31 minutes, and there's a special being called, welcome, Italiano Buscayeno, this is a disgrazia, and you're going to face this every day you sit in that chair, misrepresenting, not representing, but misrepresenting CD-15, because you're going to be putting on the backs of homeowners and taxpayers these ridiculous junkets. The CRA is dead, the money is evaporated, and yet here, somebody finds another $20 million on a bond, and of course, it's a special, of course, it's not in the agenda packet that we have from the Valley Office, you guys were supposed to be here today in the Valley to face us slaves over here, that pay all these taxes, but what you're going to do, is you're going to keep going on with your projects, your trains, your buses, and one of these days, we're going to have a real Attorney General, a real US Attorney, and a real Director of the FBI, and a real President, that's going to take a look at the second largest city in the United States, when it is in federal bankruptcy proceedings, and go, who, what, where, and whose ass do I fry for this? And unless you're going to move to Switzerland, you're going to be held accountable for these votes. So, let's do this, give me a no vote, one of you guys, one of you guys has got a soul left, and maybe Buscayeno, maybe he can be the no vote, somebody vote no, don't sit there and make it another unanimous vote, one man, and even Jan Hamburger Perry could stand up and say no to this corruption.
Thank you very much. That ends public comments, seeing no one else on the queue, open the row, close the row, tally the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
So I believe that does end special meeting?
Yes, sir, that does, if you care to adjourn the special and return to the regular.
Yes, let's adjourn the special meeting and return the regular meeting.
Mr. President, that takes counsel back to items called special, or public comment on items not on counsel.
Okay, so Ms. Perry, like to open up item two, reconsider, let's open the row, close the row, tally the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, so that does, Mr. Clerk?
Item two, the matter itself, is now before us.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve? And we, do we require a second on that? There's no cards on item two. Do we have a second on that motion?
I need a second, thank you.
Okay, we have a second, see no one else on the queue, let's open the row, close the row, tally the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
And, Mr. President, for clarification, that was a motion to grant the PCN.
Yes, okay, so that takes us to item number four.
That is correct, sir, item number four called special for cards.
Okay, we do have a couple of cards on that item, we have Arnold Sachs. That's item number four, Mr. Sachs, and Matt Dowd on item four, then we'll go to the Valley with Mr. Ketersky.
Yeah. Yes, thank you, item number four refers to relative to funding Good Shepherd Center for Homeless Women and Children, again, AB-1290 funds, last year, the CRA, not AB-1290 funds, gave money to the downtown shelter to continue operations, so A and B here, it would be really wonderful for the public to get a sense of how much money is involved in AB-1290 funds, because I believe over the last month and a half, there's probably been at least a dozen items on your agenda referring to AB-1290 funds, even last week, you had an item referring to redevelopment requirements that ended up using AB-1290 funds. And, the other part, why not use redevelopment funds like they were used for the downtown center, to assist them in their homeless programs? Why are you using AB-1290 funds? And as the wonderful Controller did an audit on AB-1290 funds and found out that, wow, a million dollars, or almost $2 million in unaccountable bills, invoices, whatever, that's a huge amount of money, isn't it? Especially when you look at items like the last one, where you have $20 million in bonds. So it's nice to get an answer, or nice to get input from our friends, like Councilman Garcetti said, we're the, we have a friend now with the new ratepayer advocate, so maybe you could explain to the rest of your friends, what the difference is between AB-1290 funds, how much is available to each council member, and why certain projects are allocated redevelopment funds, and certain ones, 1290 funds.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sachs, Matt Dowd.
All right, yes, there's, see, you can, this, this looks like a great item on its face, you know, funding for the Good Shepherd Center for Homeless Women and Children, you know, this is what people want to see, but here's the cold water, you've got to say, you know, why are they suddenly giving money to something good here, instead of sending it off to their cronies for another development project, and I'll tell you why. There's elections coming up for mayor, I see Eric Garcetti's name on this, with Tom Labonge, see, this is going to be a mayoral campaign thing in a few months, oh, look at the Good Shepherd Center for Homeless Women and Children that we provided funding for, it's warm and fuzzy, elect Zuma Dog for mayor, because he invented the warm and fuzzy. Everybody knows who, see, Eric's trying to tell me Saint David Salzburg, because nobody's going to know, no, everybody knows, his name recognition is way bigger than everybody here. But, let's try not to deviate me again from the topic, which is providing these services for the community, which everybody wants, but you've got to look at the ulterior motives, of course, because as I said, mayoral election's coming up, and they want to point to this later on, is one of the things, I wish you'd been doing this five years ago, four years ago, three years ago, two years ago, even in 2011, because I'm losing track of the years I've been here now, it's, that's, that's why things are getting a little outrageous every once in a while. But thank you, Eric Garcetti, for giving, getting the money to the homeless shelter for the women and children.
Thank you very much, our next speaker is Wayne Ketersky, and then Rick Nightingale over in Van Nuys.
Oh, yes, I love the part of this item where, if the city attorney is needed, subject to the approval, if needed, and then it authorizes the council member of the district to execute any documents on behalf of the whole city, and of course, you know that we all can trust the wisdom of Tom Labonge, one of the most brilliant of public servants we have, but since this is an election year, since we do have somebody running for mayor, that's not part of the machine, let's amend this motion, I'm sure there would be unanimous consent, to call it the Kevin James Good Shepherd Center for Homeless Women and Children, because Kevin James is running for mayor, and he gets his campaign donations from just various little guys, not like the machines that get their million dollars already, $2 million, $3 million, so this is going to be $100,000 for the Kevin James Good Shepherd Center for Homeless Women and Children. So what are they going to do with this money? Well, they're going to build a building, and that's going to be with union contracts, and then, what type of services are they going to provide here in CD-4? I looked at a map of CD-4, I don't know, Studio City, it's going to have Encino, Hollywood Hills East, Sunset Junction, those seem like very economically depressed areas of the city, right?
Mr. Reyes, he's straying from the subject matter.
No, I'm, I'm right on the subject matter there, my little puppet friend, anyway, you'll vote yes for it, so vote yes for Kevin James.
Our next speaker, Mr. Nightingale.
Yeah, here we go, I don't know, since we're so bankrupt, that you can't pay your bills, and you keep shuffling, it's like somebody having a credit card, or a couple of credit cards, and you shovel it between the two, and three, and four, and five to pay the bills, and it's like, it's like the, you know, obviously, like the little stone underneath the cups. I really feel for these people, that everybody needs money, especially all the other homeless, and so forth, but what about all of you, Democrats, as if you want to call it, that are so wealthy, that, why don't you have a committee and all that, and go to these people and ask them for the money? They're just dying to give this other money to people, to turn around and build things like this, to get their name put on it, some way or another. That sounds more logic than taking it out of general funds, and trying to get these bonds and so forth, that go to all these people, and that's what they want. Because, that's where it's at, they can afford it, they make millions of dollars, and they can pay for it. So why do you come to us and take it out of general funds, to pay the regular bills? I just don't understand how you add on more bills when the other bills haven't been paid. It's just like the same old thing, the shell game, and then you come to us and say, we're broke, and we need more money, that's the same thing as this DWP thing, you want to give the biggest high rate, the hike to it, so you can take more money out of DWP to pay your bills, and you're still not happy, what will make you happy? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, that does take care of item number four, let's open the row, close the row, tally the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Fourth with, so item number five, next.
Item number five called special for cards.
Okay, Mr. Matt Dowd, and Arnold Sachs.
All right, all right, yes, Matt Dowd, Channel 35, Los Angeles, City Council, this is a good one, found $35,000 for Silmar Independent Baseball League, for Richard Alarcon, and his good friend Paul Kerkorian, sharing districts, apparently, I don't know how that works up there, you got, you know, you just live in and out of each other's districts or something, I don't know, what's going on there? Anyway, yes, the council member of the district gets to execute any documents on behalf of the city, sure, it's very trustworthy, and it's all above board, what are we trying to do here, though, with this money, what are we trying to do? See, this is a good one, and it's only 35,000, why can't you scrape out 350,000 for these sports, and, you know, these are, these are young people, baseball diamond repair, scoreboard purchases and installation, administration, and other miscellaneous needs of the organization. So that sounds good, I got to be in favor of it, you know, I'm not that bad guy that you think all the time, but somebody, you know, somebody had to go to Iraq and fight that war, didn't they, you know, people have to step up, and, and people have to step up on these items, and not be interrupted by council members, because that's what gets them in trouble, if you read Santa Cruz versus Norris in the Ninth Circuit.
Thank you, next speaker, Arnold Sachs.
Just thank you again, another item, another 1290, AB-1290 funds, so if you looked at item four, and you said you had $100,000 for the homeless shelter, and you said, again, balance on 1290 funds, if you took half a million dollars, that would be one baseball diamond in each district, 35, a little over half a million dollars, so why don't you tell your Little League teams in your districts, that you can't play, or you have to pay the schools, the LAUSD school, to use their fields, because we don't have $35,000 for a league, a team, because we can't tell you how much money we have available in AB-1290 funds, but we are open and transparent. Tell them, tell your constituents that, oh, you got to pay to use this Little League field, because we don't have that $35,000, we got $50,000 to spend on a parking garage for a billionaire, tell them that, tell them we don't have 1290 funds, they don't have 1290 funds in your district councilman design, they don't have your 1290 funds in your district Councilman Rosendahl, Councilman Labonge, Councilman Kerkorian, would you like to opine on that? Councilman Corretts, Councilman Weezer, Councilman Garcetti, Councilman Englander, Councilman Buscayeno, Councilman Reyes, Back to the Future, Councilman Cardenas, no $35,000 for a baseball field, tell your constituents, you got no 1290 funds, but you got $50 million to help AEG, you got $200 million to help AEG, but you don't have $35,000 for a baseball field, tell your constituents, they want to hear, Councilman Parks, he's not here, but if he's at the Coliseum, you can find him, and Councilman, I can't, Wesson, no $35,000, $35,000, that's a shame.
Thank you very much, that concludes that item, let's open the row, close the row, tally the vote. Oh, Councilman, there you go, let's go back to the queue, Councilman Alarcon, it's all yours, it's all yours, Steve.
Council members, this is a very small item, but this organization, Silmar Independent Baseball League...
Councilmembers, this is a very small item, but this organization, Silmar Independent Baseball League, literally has thousands and thousands of children each year. Anybody from the Northeast Valley knows that the Silmar Independent Baseball League is one of the well, the best sports programs in the Northeast San Fernando Valley. And, and I can tell you, from the ages of three until almost adulthood, they have programs for the kids. We have been partners, the city of Los Angeles has been partners with this organization for many, many years. When we provided them land, which ultimately was sold to Mission College to create the college, we helped them move into the Wash area, just, just south of El Corizo Park. So we've had this longstanding partnership, but most importantly, by virtue of the fact that they are keeping these kids busy in positive sports, learning team skills, learning physical development and working, learning community involvement with the tremendous volunteer organization that is provided by mostly parents. This organization is certainly, $35,000 is a small amount to give to an organization that reduces the need for services at our recreation and parks programs, that increases the opportunities for young people and is, is doing such a great job of showing kids that we care for them. So thank you very much for your, I anticipate your support, but I want to thank you for encouraging sports in L A.
Congratulations, Councilman Alakon. I'm sure a lot of the children and families are very happy with that accomplishment. Councilman Labonge?
Mr. Alakon, thank you for always picking up the bat, if you will, for youth sports throughout the valley and the East Valley. I know East Valley Baseball re-energized with your help and Frank and everybody out there. And what you're doing here is important. All these fields are places where we should have young people on and it's a great investment. But you've always been a leader, Richard. Thank you.
Okay, see no one else on the queue? Let's open the row, close the row, tab by the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, next item.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number nine. It's currently scheduled for closed session and you do have cards on the matter.
We do have one card. Does anyone wish to speak on item number nine? Say the card first. Okay. Mr. Sacks? Mr. Sacks? You've got one minute, Mr. Sacks.
My request on item number nine is, involves the status of how you managed to pick this tax bracket. You know, on your agenda, when you licensed the companies to operate at the airport, they were totally different from the letters received at the County Board of Supervisors regarding a fare increase in one particular company. So I'm wondering, A, how do you pick a bracket when you don't even have the common sense or the, the equation doesn't equal out? Where you have different companies that are listed on your agenda as operating in the city that are not the same as the companies listed on the company newsletter, company letterhead to address.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Thank you very much. Well, colleagues, we do have this item. It is scheduled for closed session. But Mr. Attorney, can you advise us?
Yes, unless a council member would like to discuss the merits of this matter in closed session, it could be voted on in open session.
Okay. Are there any one on the queue who would like to speak to this issue? Say none.
Mr. President, if I may, there is a recommendation from the city attorney for settlement in the case entitled First Transit Incorporated, a Delaware corporation versus city of Los Angeles. The settlement entails the following items. The city would credit First Transit with $750,000 to be applied to its outstanding tax liabilities until this amount is exhausted. First Transit would agree that its reclassification by the Office of Finance from Section 21.194 to Section 21.187 was correct, retroactive to 2004. First Transit will continue to report its tax liabilities under Section 21.187 as long as its business model remains the same as it was during the audit period. If the current audits of M V Transportation Incorporated and Voila Transportation Services Incorporated result in the classification of these entities under Section 21.194, then the city would reclassify First Transit under Section 21.194 starting in 2012. If the audits result in the reclassification of these entities under Section 21.187, the city need not take any further action. If the current audits result in the reclassification of these two entities under Section 21.187, but a court of competent jurisdiction subsequently reclassifies M V Transportation and Voila Transportation Services under Section 21.194, then the city would reclassify First Transit under Section 21.194 as well, without need for further judicial action. Both conditions D and E previously referenced are predicated on the city having the option to audit First Transit Incorporated before reclassifying it as indicated above. That concludes the city attorney's recommendations.
Okay, thank you. With that, Mr. Clerk, see no one else on the queue? Let's open the row, close the row, tab by the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay. Sir, I believe that leads us to public comment, if I'm not mistaken?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, so let's start for public comment. And if I call your name, please come onto the microphone. And we'll start at Van Nuys. We have Jeff Gantman, Ruby Nunez and Tess Jones. Please come to the microphone, Jeff Gantman, Ruby Nunez and Tess Jones. Good day, sir.
Mr. President, pardon me, before proceeding any further, there was a recommendation or a request, rather, to send the previous item, item nine, forthwith to the mayor.
We'll send forthwith and let's give the gentleman his two minutes. Thank you, Mr. Gantman. Okay, we need audio?
...the laws and my comments this morning are to Councilman Paul Corretts, who seems to be placing politics over people. And, and it's regarding a project at 13079 Chandler, which he's very well aware of. And we come here today to again ask Councilman Corretts to uphold the law as of August 16th, due to a ruling in this case that ruled the California Court of Appeals found that the developer and the land use entitlements that were granted by the city council in 2009 were granted unlawfully, as well as the city council had abused its discretion. And finally, that as of today and for the past few months, the permits for this project are invalid. It's very simple. We asked the city and Councilman Corretts to follow the rule of law, specifically the municipal code, Section 12.27K, when guiding variances, which says you cannot introduce new evidence into the council for consideration. It would have had to been introduced at the zoning administrator's original hearing. But that's what happened in this case and we just appeared in court yesterday. And this matter will be coming back to this body in a matter of weeks. And when it does, we are going to be back again attempting to work with our councilmen because we've tried to resolve this matter. We've been before you in the past couple of weeks, showing you photos and items. And what's gone on and what's happened in this community is just downright deceitful. So this, this project isn't over. This challenge isn't over. And we respectfully ask Councilman Corretts to please uphold the law and stop the construction today. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ruby Nunez and then Tess Jones. Is Ruby Nunez there? Not saying, Miss Tess Jones?
Good morning. My name is Rudy Nunez. I have lived in this community for the past 38 years. And Councilman Corretts was made, was informed that this construction at the moment is not legal. And all I want to do is to ask Councilman Corretts to uphold the law and be sure that this project is legal. It's all we want. Just want the law upheld, upheld the way we all in our community uphold the law and are law-abiding citizens. This is wrong. Please, your job is to help us uphold the law. This is illegal. Please look into it. Don't ignore it. Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, that was Rudy Nunez, not Ruby Nunez. Thank you. So we have Tess Jones.
Hi. I'm a founding member of the West Chandler Boulevard Neighborhood Association. I've lived on Chandler for 11 years. I too am speaking about the Chabad development on Chandler Boulevard and Ethel Avenue. I fail to understand how the Chabad development continues. Councilman Corretts, you continue to ignore your constituents and the law by refusing to take the appropriate action and stop this project. This development affects not only our community, my community, but the communities within all of the council districts. Your inaction in this matter suggests that enforcing the law is a low priority. As you know, on August 16th, 2011, the California Court of Appeal ruled that the entitlements granted by the city council in 2009 were granted unlawfully. Councilmen, you also know that the courts and the city attorney's office agree that the building permits for this project are now invalid and have been for months. Yet the building is still in the process of being constructed. Councilmen, you are for some reason protecting this development. As a result, you are making a mockery of the city zoning laws. In addition, I find it appalling that you continue to tell people that because you inherited this project, you are unable to do anything about it. This defies logic. You have been the councilman since July of 2009. It is now February 2012. The city must follow the law, stop the construction on this project now. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Linda Romney and then Scott Zuback, I believe. Linda Romney. Good day, ma'am.
Good afternoon. First, I would like to address the issue of public comment and respectfully request that the two minutes that are afforded the concerned citizens of which, in the Van Nuys office, as you can see here, we have over 200 seats set up. We have only 12 concerned citizens. Why then do you make us wait over two hours for our two minutes to address this respectful committee? Please put us in the beginning of your agenda as is done by the D W B commissioners and the other city commissioners. Now, to address the Department of Water and Power, it has been just appointed as of January 31st, the elected taxpayer advocate. And nevertheless, the city council has disregarded its citizenry. It has disregarded those who have elected you and you have gone ahead with a rate increase that is the largest, going to be the largest rate increase on water in the recorded history of the Department of Water and Power, over 30%. We do not need to convert over our reservoirs to drinking water. The percentage of water that is used for drinking is less than 0.8. Therefore, the city could put through a program where you could have delivery, home delivery of Arrowhead distilled water and it would be less money than what you're doing to us. We cannot afford this. We're in the middle of a depression. You have to know that the majority of the water is used for landscaping. It's used for washing our dishes. Our water is used for washing our clothes. You do not need to convert over all of our reservoirs to drinking water. It is not an efficient method.
Thank you very much. Candido Maris? We have Scott Zuback and then Candido Maris.
Good morning, Mr. President. Councilmembers can... Oh, who, Mr. President, who's supposed to be first?
Go ahead, Mr. Maris.
All right. I hope you'll hold, I hope you'll hold my two minutes, sir.
Yes, just give him his two minutes, please.
All right. First of all, again, Mr. President, thank you very much. Candido Maris, proud resident of the 12th district, where I have the honor of being represented by Councilman Mitch Englinger. I too am here to celebrate African American History Month and also the election of Mr. Wesson as the president, city council president, first African American, and we hope to hear some great things from him. But, Mr. President, I would ask Angelinos to join us in celebrating African American Month by going out and seeing two wonderful movies that I was able to watch. One, one was Red Tails, which was the history of African American pilots who did outstanding feats during World War II. And what angers me is that I had to wait till I was an adult to hear about these great men. As a young man, I heard about Daniel Boone, how he fought a bear and, you know, we know that was a, and whipped his butt, but we know that was a false. But yet here were these individuals, these black African Americans who fought during World War II and did great things. And it took to this long to hear about them, so I hope this doesn't happen in the future. Also, the other movie is called The Help, which has to deal with African American women and the racism that they had to go through and what they learned, that they had a voice and that they could speak out. And they're just great movies. And so I'm going to ask Mr. Wesson, Mr. Wesson, I don't know if you're even there, but I would ask you to join Mr. Parks and Ms. Perry in leading us, this great, in leading this great city and joining us all together. We have a lot to achieve. We have a lot to overcome. But, Mr. Wesson, please, let's all get together with the rest of the council and the mayor's office. This is the greatest city and the greatest country in the world. And as Martin Luther King once said, that when we stop caring for each other as human beings, we start dying inside. So let's not allow that to happen. We're a great city. We need to come together as one city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Candido. And Councilman Wesson did hear you and he is here. Our next speaker, Scott Zuback, I believe? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Perhaps you saw the article in the Daily News last week about the family in Van Nuys who had lost their home and were living in a relative's garage. A neighbor called the city, and with a zeal that has been lacking in our case, Building and Safety went out, sent out an investigator, and the result is that this family might be made homeless again because of the lack of an 18-inch setback on a garage. So perhaps you can tell me why, despite repeated calls to Building and Safety Street Services, despite suing the city and getting a judgment against the city council, Chabad of North Hollywood can continue to build a project which is clearly illegal? I'll tell you why. The family in Van Nuys who's homeless has no voice. Chabad of North Hollywood has a lobbyist who seems to have each one of you on speed dial. Your ex-associate, Jack Weiss, with less than seven days in office, pulled a 245 on Chabad's project. This project was denied across the board. A compromise was put in which allowed a structure which had never been seen by any agency. In other words, the city council broke the law. Rather than being chastened by this rebuke from the court, the city council, in the person of Mr. Corretts and the balance of the city government, continue to hide behind political and special interest blinds and refuse to do anything to correct the situation. We demand that the city now start obeying the courts and the law. Mr. Corretts must order any and all construction on this project halted immediately. New plans must be submitted. They must be reviewed by the proper agencies. And then those plans must be debated in an open forum and not in the back corridors of City Hall. Most importantly, Chabad must be ordered to remove all current construction down to the ground as it is illegal. If I had put forth a project before the city and then built a different project, you wouldn't let me go forward, so why are you allowing this organization to go forward? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Herbert Thompson. After Mr. Thompson, we have Rick Nettengel.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and Los Angeles City Council. Today I'm here to bring recognition to my Victims Assistance Outreach Program. I'm asking all the councilmen and all the assemblymen that's in the San Fernando Valley, support me with this. We are doing a lot of outreach in different communities. And also, Mrs. Zion, I would like to talk with someone with your office about having our next Victims Rights Meeting in your district. And also, I just want to give a little history about myself. And also, for those who don't know me, well, my name is Herbert Thompson. Tomorrow I'll be celebrating my 2,000 hours of community service here in the San Fernando Valley. I'm also with the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council as the outreach chair. I'm also on the executive board with Van Nuys Neighborhood. I'm also on the Executive Board with Van Nuys Neighborhood Council. I am also with a member of the N double A C P, which I hold two chairs. I'm the Outreach... Excuse me. I'm with the Housing Committee, and I'm also the Chair for the Young Adults. I also founded an organization called Victims Fighting Back, which I'm the CEO and President of, which operate out of Arkansas, which we are currently being housed here in San Fernando Valley under PCYCC, Comma Community Youth Culture Center, which is an organization that's under attack right now. But I believe in God, and I believe that we will prevail. And also, if all the councilmen in the San Fernando, if they could please consider giving me a letter of support for Victims Rights.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Rick Nettingale.
Yeah, Rick Nettingale. Going back to CRA and that, I'll tell you, man... Oh, by the way, I think it's a dirty, rotten shame that you people turn around and went through the whole meeting and didn't put public comment ahead like we usually do. Shame, shame on you people. These people have been waiting to put lousy two minutes, and you went through the whole meeting. Another thing, you didn't come to the valley like you're supposed to. Why are we the unwanted people all the time? Why don't you let us go, and we'll just be our own city? But no, you gotta hang on to us, because we got the cash cow. But, you know, you're supposed to be here, be here. But now, I heard you're going to go down to El Segundo and that stuff the next time. We're not supposed to share the time. You're supposed to come here, and then if they, you want to go there, then fine. I mean, what's going on here? I think it's a dirty, rotten shame. Getting back to the CRA, man, like I says, your cash cow has disappeared on that deal. That's really great, but you're going to put it back onto something else. That's the same thing as on... From the CRA, now the money's going to go to the school board, and they're crying the blues that they don't have no money, but they get 40% of the money, every dollar that goes to Sacramento, the school board gets. Right now, it's hard times, and everybody knows it, but the tax money's going to come there. God, hopefully, that you don't vote for Obama and getting this thing thrown out, and you might start... The government might turn around and quit going over their budget and do something. But now, the Sacramento's crying over the Proposition 25, that if they don't do a balanced budget, they don't get paid. It was all great when they turned around and had the majority. It didn't go to a majority vote to turn around and run something through. They put this other thing on the tail end about they won't get paid, and now they're crying the blues that you can't do that. That's unconstitutional. What a bunch of crock.
Thank you very much. Wayne Ketersky.
Yes, in honor of the great developer, Hal Ketersky. Anyway, I heard the name of a famous politician in CD5. That would be Jack Weiss. I just want to give a shout out to Jackass Weiss. And thing over in Chandler, I remember about that, reading about that. But CD5 in the valley portion is the cesspool of developer corruption. You go out to Ventura Boulevard towards the 101 freeway north, and you will see houses there. There's a famous one on Havenhurst that a guy built, something that looks like Stonehenge, numerous violations, and they just extend the permit. So, nobody cares about that portion of CD5, and it is just a wasteland for developer opportunities. So, we heard these speakers talk about not being able to follow the law. Well, I mean, does anybody in the council care about that? Of course, they don't. And I'm trying to reach out to the newest member of the council, because somewhere inside that man, there's got to be good before it erodes. People talk about Paul Krikorian when he started, but you see the process grinds you down, meeting after meeting, campaign contributor after campaign contributor. Pretty soon, the people don't matter anymore. And we had a rate hike vote on the water and power, nine to four. Four of you voted no. Why didn't nine of you vote no versus four? And the reason is, is because there's just too many layers of corruption between us and the people.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, back here at City Hall, we have Felicia Ford. Are you here, Felicia Ford? Good afternoon, ma'am.
I'm sorry, it was in the back.
That's okay.
Good morning, everyone. Oh, it's the Lord's God's mercy and grace that wakes us up every single day. Thank you very much. You know, we entrust our loved ones to nursing homes, and, you know, I spoke last week and this week with regards to the death, the wrongful death of my aunt, who was 85 years old. And she retired as a secretary to the CEO for McDonnell Douglas. My grandfather, which you all were mentioning, the history of this city and this building, my grandfather built this city hall. I also want to say that I don't come down here just to speak. I come down here to also speak to the public, to let them know that I am an advocate for helping them. I have established a hotline, which is 310-535-1701, and that is for if you've had a family member that has had a wrongful death in a nursing facility, a desecration of a loved one in a cemetery, this is the number that you can call. I have extended my time and my services for many, many years dealing with the Woodline Cemetery matter, and I will now extend it to those that have had problems or uncertainty about their loved ones in nursing facilities and hospitals. Let me give you the number again. It is 310-535-1701. And I'm a woman that's not... I don't belong to the do-nothing club. This was the wrong family member for the wrongful death, and I'm going to help those that have, are in need of understanding what is really going on in the nursing facilities, because the authority, those that have been in authority have not helped us. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Eleanor Harrison, Eleanor Harrison, and then Mr. Ben Fortson.
Good morning. I'm here on behalf of African American, Black communities, and Black History Month. On Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, one of my staff at several LAPD and sheriff officers was a percentage of African Americans and Black people in law enforcement. They answered between 10 and 12%. The excuse they used was there's not enough Black people applying. The fact of the matter is, African American, Black communities feel alienated and don't feel welcome due to the history of abuse that the LAPD, Sheriff Department, the city and District Attorney Office have committed against Black people over the decades. It's only right for the LAPD, Sheriff Department, and the whole judicial system as a whole to reach out and put forth the same amount of effort to target and recruit as it does to target and persecute African American, Black people. The whole judicial system must reach out and demonstrate to African American, Black people that we are welcome. How many times has it been said, we treat everyone the same? But the truth is, African American, Black communities have never been treated with equality as other people and communities. When it comes to prosecution, we are at the top of the list. When it comes to protected justice, we are at the end of the line. The majority don't want the judicial system to reach out to Black people, so we won't feel welcome to come and apply. The history and numbers prove it. It's not fair to just allow a few African American, Black people to slip through the cracks to fulfill a quota. From President Obama and his family down to the least of a Black homeless person, the majority view and treat all African American, Black people as illegitimate step citizens. Diversity is abundant, but equality is nonexistent.
Mr. Ben Fortsett?
Good morning. I'm here to shine a light on the inequality. My fiancee and I were... are here in regards to the hate crime that was committed against us on February 11th, 2011, by Ryan McKenzie, and the cover-up that we believe took place, and believe it can be proven. We feel the investigation has taken far too long, and that a thorough and complete investigation is not being carried out. We spoke to Sergeant Cryer from the Southwest Division, and he refused to give us any detailed information in regards to the case. So, we would like to speak with someone here that's willing to help us. How can we... How can we accept, expect, an unbiased and just outcome when the LAPD is granted the power to police and investigate itself, which is every bit a dictatorship? It's crystal clear that the LAPD and Sheriff Department remains a biased and racist fundamental sector of the U.S. government. All Black people in the LAPD and Sheriff Department, regardless of the stars and stripes they may bear, that want to remain, know their place and dare not make waves, because they are fully aware of the secret agenda that by all means, the majority will hold fast to the embedded racist practices. So, there's no doubt that the mere approximate 10% of Blacks in the LAPD and Sheriff Department is no accident and is by design. How can anyone proclaim fairness and that LA is a good city when there's a lack of equality and a major imbalance of power?
Matt Dow, followed by Arnold Sachs. Come on up, Arnold. And Bobby Cooper. Is Mr. Cooper here?
All right, Mr. Labange. Hope Mr. Weston's here too, because this is the only place I get to talk about decorum and public comment. And here's what I want to say, and I want Eric Garcetti to listen to this too, because he's the one who came up with these rules. See, yesterday was... I said some things, and that was a... That's what you call an as-applied, you know... It's an as-applied fault of that, this application here, because I did say something similar about a year ago when I was talking about your attorney in federal court, and Eric had me removed, because he said it was a sexual reference, the one from about a year ago. And that was, I was talking about the attorney, and I said the judge tore him... Da-da-da-da-da. But yesterday, I was talking about something completely innocent, and let me tell you why that's important. I went to a preliminary injunction hearing with Judge Pregerson. You know, I filed for that, and I won the injunction. And your attorney in court and in the pleading said, "Oh, Your Honor, an injunction is an extraordinary remedy that should never be issued." But he gave us one. But while we were in the hearing, most of the hearing was about the decorum. And your attorney stands up there, because the judge pulled him up on the mic first. He put me in the chair. I was swiveling there, drinking the water, and, oh, watching the show. And your attorney, "Oh, Your Honor, Dowd used the profanity at the city council." And what did the Honorable Judge Dean Pregerson say? And I'm going to get this transcript if I have to. He said three words. "In what context?" "In what context did he use the profanity?" So, there's contexts. See, that's why your rules have got problems, because you're just stomping on like pussy or some word that can have context. And there's ways I could use it that would be offensive.
Okay. Next speaker is Arnold Sachs. Mr. Garcetti?
I think context is important, and for the record, I have stated before that certain sexual references can't be used. People aren't kicked out for that. They're kicked out for disruptions following those after I have stated those rules. Thank you.
Mr. Sachs?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sachs. Certainly glad you made the change, Mr. Weston, regarding presentations, because we would have another extra half an hour in today's meeting for the awards you gave out on Wednesday. But I also wanted to talk a little bit about the rate... The increase that you made in the rates, and people are under this misunderstanding that that's going to be debatable. Because the real... The real meat of that whole meeting yesterday wasn't the rate increase. It was the elimination of the cap for rate increases. There's no more six cents per quarter cap, or six cents every three months cap. That was eliminated. And that's not part of a rate increase, so that's not under opinion for the new rate payer advocate to look into. That's a policy. So, now, instead of having a yearly cap of 24 cents, there is no cap. That's what accomplished yesterday. And I'd really like to thank, I believe it was Mr. Cardenas yesterday, for his ability to clarify when the gentleman was sitting at the table, and he got up to speak. He's the first speaker after their presentation, and he was going to clarify what was going on, clarify so that people will know. And the last person, the head of the D W P mentioned, they did all this work, they've got all this stuff done, and they've got letters of endorsement from Central City, from the Chamber of Commerce, from this, from that, from this and that. And Mr. Cardenas, in his ability to clarify, the first damn question he asks is, "Do you have any letters of endorsement?" And that's what the guy just said!
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Have a good weekend. That completes our public comment. We have no other cards before us. Mr. Clerk, what's before us?
Mr. President, we do have special one, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
To the findings, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the National League of Cities has requested that the full council adopt a resolution in opposition to H R 3864 regarding the funding of public transit programs. Immediate action is required before the House Ways and Means Committee acts on this bill today. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. This is after the findings. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
13 eyes.
13 eyes. On the queue now is Ms. Perry, the maker of the motion.
Okay, great. The National League of Cities just informed the City of Los Angeles that the House is changing transit funding from a special fund to paying it out of the Federal General Fund, and will take up this matter today. This means that transit funding will not happen, because there is not enough Federal General Fund money available. This puts the City of Los Angeles at risk. The city could lose a great deal of federal funding for our transit programs that are already in the pipeline, and that is why it is necessary to move forward on this today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosedal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, it appears that there's action within the House of Representatives that would slow down what we're doing in terms of what we need to do with our mass transit systems. The League of Cities obviously agrees with us that we're being ignored in our needs here on the local level. We, the people of past measure, are. The whole point of it, in the roughest of times, is the gridlock is unbearable, and we want to get out of this gridlock. We want to create pedestrian walkways and cycling paths, and we want to move forward. Their game-playing in the House of Representatives, which unfortunately is a gridlocked situation, impacting the entire nation. This motion, resolution, is saying the city doesn't agree with you all. Hopefully, it will have some impact in Washington. That's why I asked for unanimous vote, so we can move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one card. Wayne Ketersky. How do you pronounce Wayne's last name, Mr. Clerk?
Ketersky.
Ketersky in the Valley. Here we go.
Yes, in honor of Ketersky's. Thank you, House of Representatives. It's a Republican-controlled body. I mean, God, we could only dream of California having one representative body that's ran by anything but union-dominated, left-wing fanatics that we have in Sacramento. And this is being done not to hurt. It's being done because they know in Washington that this money is being squandered. that this money is being squandered and they know why. I, I drove down the 405 back and forth and they're shutting down the entire freeway at midnight to 6:00 AM. And why? Because they're stalling. We built the Lake Mead in the 30s, the Golden Gate Bridge, 100, almost 100 years ago, 90, 80 years ago, and we can't complete a couple of miles of a miserable freeway? Why? Because they sucking the money out of the taxpayers and that's the reason why the House of Representatives is going to cut this funding if they can. They just want accountability. Where's the accountability in taking five, six years to put the Mulholland Bridge back an additional lane? Where is the sanity of building something in the San Fernando Valley that's a bus line when everybody else gets a train? Why doesn't the San Fernando Valley have a train? They have money left over from the, from the Orange Line. Millions of dollars, they have money left over and yet, here you guys are saying, we need more. How much more? That's the reason why you need to support the House.
That completes public comment. Oh, we have a card just out of, Mr. Sachs from Lenox, California. Thank you.
Thank you. Regarding funding for, for projects for the MTA, you know, in the last board meeting at the MTA, one of the items on the agenda was a project labor agreement with the unions and so that projects will continue, will be, be able to be completed without any kind of work stoppage or disorganization. So, I got up and asked a question. I said, um, let's see, we had the red line, we had the blue line, we had the gold line, we had the HOV lanes, we had the overpass on the 110 built, we had the widening of the 405 by the airport, you had the widening of the 5 freeway in Orange County, you have the 405 freeway in Orange County that was widened, the carpool lanes that were made, the bus lanes on the 10 freeway that were made, the El Monte Busway that was made, all these proj, the Orange Line, all these projects made by MTA and not one project slowed down, shut down by any work shortage. The only slowdown or shutdowns were by the stupidity of the MTA Board of Directors and the, and the, oh, the gas they found on the west side of LA and the collapse of the road on Hollywood which lowered the property values. I wonder how that worked out? Those are the only two problems you had with construction, but they weren't involving any building. So, funding for projects in LA, project labor agreements for these mass transit projects, name one that has been, the consequences of one where there's been a, a work stoppage or a shortage or any kind of problem like that.
Thank you very much. That completes the comment on this issue. There's no speakers on the queue. It's supported by the Southern California Association of Governments. Mr. Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Third, fourth with, please. Next item.
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
So ordered.
The desk is clear.
Desk is clear. Members, we have any announcements on this first weekend of the month, the new month of February? Any announcements? Do we have adjourned motions? Yes, we have adjourned motions. Will we all please rise for adjourned motions? We have to start on this. Ms. Perry.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Patricia Deralde Sweringer. She was a champion of affordable housing and a beloved member of the Southern California community. She was a lifelong advocate for providing affordable housing solutions for low-income seniors and families. She served as the founding incorporator, director and secretary on each of 12 nonprofit boards of directors. In all, she helped to build or acquire 12 affordable housing projects totaling over 538 living units. She willingly gave of herself to improve the condition of each and every apartment, building and unit. Ms. Sweringer was also an active member and creator of the American Research Center in Egypt, Southern California, joining others who loved Egyptology. She is survived by her two children, Bill and Richard, Richard's wife Maria, her grandchildren, Austin and Ryland, and four siblings, Ed, Yolanda, Irene and Armida. She will be sincerely missed by all who knew her bright, helpful and positive personality.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Garcetti.
Very much, Mr. President. It's with great sadness that I ask to adjourn today for a friend of mine and many people, I think, around this horseshoe, Dr. Jacinto J. Valencia, who is one of the highest ranking Filipino-Americans in the union movement, the Vice President for Administrative and Legislative Affairs of the National Union of Healthcare Workers, NUHW, based here in California, who passed away during the night of January 31st, 2012, in his home in Highland Park at the age of just 63. Dr. J, as he was fondly called by his friends, was born on September 11th, 1949. On a personal note, he was the first elected honorary mayor of Philippine Town, Inc., and was instrumental in the designation we had in these chambers of Historic Filipino Town, worked on that for decades and was, was one of the first people who came to me after I was elected council member for the 13th District and helped us greatly in creating Historic Filipino Town in 2002. He was also field representative of Speaker Antonio Villarosa, based in Sacramento until the 1990s, joining SEIU 99 in Los Angeles in 2000, remaining there until he joined the NUHW where he acted as Vice President for Legislative Affairs. It was a very proud moment for the members of NUHW because so many NUHW members, maybe even a majority, are Filipina and Filipino health workers for hospitals. Dr. J was also active in Philippine politics, the president, Bagon Pilipino, Bagon Pilipinas, and he actively campaigned for Brother Eddie Villanueva during the presidential elections of 2009. He was seen everywhere at Filipino events and Filipino community gatherings in Los Angeles. He became president of Pampanga Associations and was active in his provincial organizations as well. He was a board member of the Justice for Filipino-American Veterans, JFAV, and with the Echo Park Community Coalition acting as its coordinator since 2002. He was a staunch advocate for our veterans of World War II from the Philippines and their widows, tirelessly lobbied and spoke in their behalf in Sacramento, here in the LA City Council, in the US Congress and Justice for Filipino-American Veterans. This is a huge loss at such a young age. He will be greatly missed. Services will be on February 8th, 9th at Forest Lawn, 1712 South Glendale Avenue, and he's survived by his wife, Rosa Lee, his son, John, daughter, Aileen, grandchildren, Salo, Micah and Naia. And I know Mr. Weisert would like to join me as a cosponsor.
Mr. Garcetti, I would like to join you on that as well. I had the privilege to attend, I want to say it was his 25th anniversary and he and his wife renewed their vows and he's a big friend of our office and myself and I was shocked when you said that because I did not know that he was ill. Yeah, his wife would enjoy if it were all of us.
All members, so ordered. Mr. Englander.
Yes, members, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Granada Hills Women's Club member, Nancy Harwood, succumbed to cancer at the age of 84. Nancy was born in Plymouth, England and grew up in Roland, Nevada. Her family eventually moved to Santa Monica. Nancy graduated from UCLA with a teaching credential. At the end of World War II, she met her husband, Ted, who is a bomber pilot. They moved to San Fernando Valley where they raised their five children and celebrated 50 years of marriage. Upon the death of her husband 14 years ago, Nancy joined the Granada Hills Women's Club, where she held many offices and made a lot of friends. The women's club became a major part of her life. Nancy leaves a sister, Jean, and five children, Pat, Jan, Fay, Ted and Ray. She's also survived by six grandchildren. She left not only her family, but many devoted friends who loved and miss her daily. May Nancy Harwood rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. And members, I'd like to ask to adjourn in memory of a great American, Angelo Dundee, who lived to be 90 years old, born in Philadelphia, died in Florida at a care facility, but just the name, one of the greatest of all in the boxing world, a trainer, a ringman, uh, someone who was a great coach to Muhammad Ali and many other people who put on the gloves in the ring. Angelo Dundee, 90 years old. I see no other adjourned motions, but I do have one announcement from Mr. Alicon.
Council members, I want to invite the community to come out to Love Your Dog Walk and Pet Expo at Brand Park. This is sponsored by my office. We're gonna have a dog walk where we can walk our dogs around the park at 9:00 AM at Brand Park, 15174 San Fernando Mission Boulevard in Mission Hills. There will be a pet expo where you can get free spay and neuter for low-income folks. There will be low-cost grooming services and vaccines, pet adoptions, animal licensing, free microchips and pet information booths. So, come on out to Brand Park tomorrow and bring your pets.
Okay, that completes the announcements and the adjourned motions. Everyone have a good, safe weekend. The council is adjourned. Thank you.